Let's be really pretty, shall we?
I'm sorry, I don't have here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of July 27th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the town council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the submission of minutes of previous meetings of, excuse me, this one in particular, July 6th. The, it's item A1.
I move that minutes be accepted as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is an advertised public hearing. This is for Toasted Bun Hospitality LLC, DBA, Statesman Tavern, 31 State Street. Request council consideration for the expansion of the existing liquor license to include the outside sidewalk area. You have recommendation, recommendation provided by the fire chief and town administrator. This is an advertised public hearing.
Did you want to, Lou, Mr. Clerk, can we combine D1 with this? I know it's a public hearing, but it's all in the same. Can we get a motion of that effect?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we're going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? I'm not surprised. Sam, come on up.
Hello again.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sam.
Sam Glynn, 31 State Street, Bristol. Kind of getting used to the agenda, way these things go. Just wanted to report back the temporary one that we were approved for on July 6th. It's been going great so far, so we'd love to continue doing that throughout the course of the year, as we talked about in the previous meeting. So it's been very well received. You know, the aesthetic is, it fits our, it shows what the inside of the restaurant looks like on the outside, so it's a great marketing vehicle, especially for, not just for myself, but for other businesses in town, too. So I think it's a step in the right direction. So I would, I would be very pleased to see it go through on a permanent basis. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
So you've submitted this drawing, have you, that has been commented on?
Yes, sir.
Yep. I found that a little puzzling because there's a big square on the lower right that says "tree."
That is correct.
So the question is, I'm not sure, I know the full geometry in truth, but if there's a tree there and the pedestrian has to walk between your front door and the tree, wouldn't that person then have to turn left in order to get by your tables that are further on? In other words, the geometry of this suggests some trouble.
That complies with the current ordinance.
Well, why is the tree, though, so far into the pathway?
It's, it's more than 48 inches, which is the current ordinance, so that was the way to appease the masses and to get the ordinance approved the way it is instead of trying to change it to comply with ADA.
Perhaps you'd come forward and look at the diagram for a second. I don't understand how a pedestrian is going to get around the tree and also get around your tables without having to do an S-tiff.
We've had it that way when it was approved last month for, or at the beginning of the month. There's been, there's been no hitch, no complaints. You know, I've, I've even asked people, I've seen people walk by pushing strollers, pushing wheelchairs. There's been no instance where anybody is.
Well, you know, we've got a very careful ordinance that you're familiar with, and I know you're intending to abide by it. But there's also a little bit of a common sense here. Now, is it true that the tree is smaller than the diagram suggests, or?
That's, I mean, the cutout that you see on there, the square, is the actual, the, the tree is not that big. The tree is in the center of that.
Then if I wanted to walk by your place without coming in, I'd have to walk behind the tree and then curve out to the left and leave your tables to my right and go by.
Again, the-
There's a simple solution to this, and that would be to turn your tables in a more conventional way, where the table's against the building and the chairs are along the path. Do you have room to put another table on the right side of this diagram on the other side of the front door?
Mike.
I'm going to take this one.
I'm going to defer to-
Just, the initial application at our last meeting included chairs on the left and right side of the front door. The one, the chairs and tables on the right-hand side would actually impede traffic on the sidewalk. There was, it wouldn't stop it, but it was not in compliance with our current ordinance. So this was a suggestion of a way, and we approved it at our last meeting, to allow for the two tables out in front with two chairs and a nice clear path. And I think the applicant is kind of trying to stay away from it, but the tree is, that's a big old cutout. That's a clear pathway there, too. It's not hard concrete, but it's certainly a clear pathway there. And we measured it a couple of times. If you recall, I actually went down there myself with the code compliance officer and director of community development. And this was the, the best answer and still staying in compliance. But to speak directly to your question, Halsey, yes, there is a bit of a meander there as opposed to a straight shot. But truly, there is also a meander with just our trees that we have down the sidewalk. And it was in no way that I saw, and we all agreed and voted on the affirmative on that, that it wasn't an issue. But you are correct, there is a bit of a meander there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, though, do you see the question that I raised? For example, there's a, is that a sort of a fence around the chairs, or is that nothing? What is that line that's 88 inches away from the front?
Say that one more time.
On this diagram, there's a horizontal line 88 inches away from the front of the building.
That's to delineate the space. It's just the scale. There's currently planters there to-
Are you going to have something there, or is that just?
There's three planters there that define the space and keep it within the-
Well, I have to say to you, sir, that I'd like to see you accommodated, but I don't agree at all with this geometry. It flies in the face of our intention when we wrote the ordinance.
It adheres to the current ordinance.
A big pun?
It adheres to the current ordinance. I'm just working within the confines of what I have to work with.
Well, it doesn't adhere to common sense. That's the problem with it.
Yeah, I can understand that. I can certainly understand that. But again, this, it applies with every ordinance that's on the town.
I'm not so sure you're right about that. I would like to look it over myself. Anyway, I'm not going to vote for this if this is the arrangement you have.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Glynn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is, what's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that with the compliance of our ordinance and due to the diagram, even though there was questions on the schematics, that it does abide by the clearances. And the applicant knows that all the other pertaining information to the ordinance, Mr. Glynn, of the hostess and the type of barricade that is required of your neighbors in uniform in that area, as you're well aware of, and upon all the recommendations of the town administrator and the police department, but also to be mindful of the fire chief's recommendation of the doorway and the clearance that he specified in all state laws and ordinances, I make a motion this applicant be granted.
A motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So that's a four to one. So we'd also like to, where you have D1 combined here, so why don't we have a separate motion on that one? Or did you take that as one motion for both? Because that's what we did.
There really wasn't any motion regarding the public hearing. There is only one motion to approve, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you.
The, the next item is ordinance 2016-12. This is for amendment to the industrial pretreatment program, setting certain limits for, as specified.
Make a motion, this constitutes for the first reading, Mr. Chairman. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is item D2.
Any opposed?
I heard all yays. I heard those five yays. The, the next item is item D2. This is the petition of Kevin Santazo, Doing Business As Just Ducky, 34 Gooding Avenue. Request council consideration for junk and secondhand dealer's license. This is a new owner. If the council would be so inclined, just hang on one second. I just have to check one thing.
We're just waiting for the clerk to come back, so we'll, maybe we have a little vamp here. A junk and secondhand license is just a horrible name for a license to sell quality goods that are no longer new.
Yeah, this is new, new owner, same premises. I just wanted to make sure it didn't require a public hearing. It does not.
It does not. What's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the request for junk and secondhand dealer's license.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the petition of George Sayers, Third, Doing Business As Ziggy's Doghouse, 1 Asylum Road. Request council consideration for vitrifying license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, water pollution control department, and fire chief, all to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item D4 is the petition of Charles Barone, Doing Business As Empire Tea and Coffee, 251 Thames Street. Request vitrifying license. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and water pollution control department to approve.
Mr. Chairman, it's come to the attention of the council that there's some complication on this issue, namely that there seems to be a, an agreement in place between the hotel property and the leaser, which is a long-term lease for the Wolf Inn Restaurant. And I don't know that we have either the authority or the duty to solve that altercation because it's between two parties, it's a civil matter. But I do think that it would be sensible for us to provide some time for the issue to be resolved before we take action on this matter.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
He is, wonderful. Please, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, Charles Barone, 251 Thames Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I was just made aware of this issue as of today. I do have a letter for you from the owner of the property, basically stating that there is no such issue, no such exclusivity clause with the other tenants in the property. And furthermore, it is a private matter between them. It really isn't anything to do with us. So I can give this to you.
If you could bring it to the clerk, if you would.
That'd be great.
And maybe, yes, would you, please?
Could you summarize the letter for us?
Sure. Well, I can read it real quick. Thames Street Landing is a mixed-use development with multiple independent retail, restaurant, and office uses. There are currently three tenants at Thames Street Landing that are operating food and beverage services, service establishments, Thames Waterside Grill, DeWolf Tavern, and Gray's Ice Cream. None of their leases prohibit leasing additional space to other food and beverage providers serving the public. Any arrangement, argument to the contrary constitutes a private matter. And that's from TSL LLC, managing partner Gene Goldstein.
You're primarily, what are you?
We are a tea and coffee shop.
A coffee shop and, and you do like breakfast foods and much?
Yeah, we have very light breakfast items.
So you're right at the corner of Memorial and Bellevue, is that you?
Correct.
And then I just noticed that you're on East Main Road last night?
Yep.
You just opened with the Subway?
Yeah, that one's really just an express store, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have four locations in, on Equinix Island.
So you're expanding.
Yes.
Welcome.
Well, welcome, yeah.
Thank you. We're very excited to be in Bristol.
Well, sir, are you cognizant of the agreement signed at the time of the sale of the hotel, which says as follows, section 1.16, exclusivity, assistance booking of business. Leaser designates Leacy as its exclusive third-party food and beverage service provider.
May I?
Absolutely, Andy, go ahead.
First of all, as indicated, it is a private matter. And this was just handed to me today, the section that you're about to, you started to read, Mr. Harrischoff. And frankly, looking at this section, it is not an exclu, even if it is, it's a private thing, but even if it were, it doesn't appear to apply. It basically appears to be exclusive saying that as far as the hotel will only use this particular restaurant. So it's a problem for the hotel. They might be violating their lease if they went to him instead of the other restaurant. That's what it appears to be saying. It doesn't even appear to be saying that it's a exclusive for the whole development. So based on this, and as I said, indicated previously, all parties indicated it's a private matter, I think the council should just focus on the vitrifying license aspects of it. Is this an appropriate place for a vitrifying license? And is there, is this a fit license holder for it?
Well, Mr. Tights, as you and I discussed earlier today, we all agree that it's not up to the town to settle the difference between the two parties. But I do think it would be sensible for us to allow them a period of time to settle the matter, hopefully amicably, between now and the 24th of August.
Obviously, that's up to the council. If you, you don't feel comfortable with it, I'm, when you and I talked this morning, Councilman Harrischoff, I was not aware of the particular language here. In fact, I wasn't aware until about two minutes ago what it is.
But you're not going to, any more than we are, solve this issue. That's up to them to solve it, isn't it?
That, that's correct.
I mean, isn't, isn't the people, this is owned by the same people that own the whole property, right? And they rented, they agreed to rent to you, correct?
Correct.
And they've rented to all the other places. So we would think that they would know what's in their lease agreements. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me in that respect, in that sense. I mean, it's not like, like they're leasing it to you as well as all the other places that someone just named.
I think you were correct in your understanding that the exclusivity clause is to serve the hotel. We're serving the public. If people from the hotel happen to come in, that's their thing. But we're here to serve the residents of Bristol, the visitors of Bristol.
But you wouldn't, but you don't even have the same food that the other restaurants would have in the sense that this is like a quick takeout, like a coffee and a muffin type of stuff, right?
Correct. And we're going to be opening, most of our core hours are going to be 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So I don't know what, I don't even know what the other businesses are, but we're definitely more fast casual, like in and out.
Six to 10. Would this, would this be a, would there be a blocker if we continued?
It would definitely cause some effect. We were planning to be open before the next council meeting.
When do you plan on opening?
We're hoping probably the last week, the last two weeks of August, we should be done. So it's just a matter of then training. Like all of our, we'll just need fire inspection and health inspection at that time, but we've had all the approvals. So we really would like to get open and practice before Labor Day weekend.
Where's your third location down Equinix Island?
So our headquarters is on Broadway. That's where we roast all of our coffee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that one.
And then we have one by the beach, and then Bellevue Memorial, and then, as you knew, on East Main Road. So we've been looking at Bristol for a couple of years, so we're really excited to be here.
Well, I go by one of them just about, like, quite often, but I never really want to deal with the parking situation.
Can understand.
I think you'd be a great addition to the town. And it's good to see your hours open until 10:00 PM. It's nice.
Thank you.
Someplace to go.
If I may say so, sir, I think it might be to your advantage to have some period of time before this is all decided. Because if you go ahead, you have a building permit dated June 27th. If you go ahead and spend your money building all this installation, and in the end, you're not able to use it, that's going to be a waste of your money. So I think a way is probably to everybody's advantage on this.
I, I think that, you know, my legal counsel has reviewed our lease, and I feel confident that we can handle any issues that might come up between us and the landlord. So if they have to deal with something, then that's, that's on them, but-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I don't want to prohibit this or be a blocker for a business, good business that wants to come to town. I'd like to propose a conditional approval based on that they, with, work with Andy in regards to making, confirming with the landlord that it's, you know, everything's resolved.
I can, I, I like the thought, I do like the thought process, but I don't, I, we've heard from everyone that has spoken that it's a private matter, and I don't believe it's good, going to use that word, I can come up with a couple of other ones, but good that we get in the middle of it, but I do understand exactly where you're coming from. So I would think in my head that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, but this is a vitrifying license. It's, if they get all the check marks on there, there's no reason for us to say no. And I haven't heard a reason to say no. Obviously, Councilman Harrischoff has brought up a concern, and it's a fair concern. But if we can't consider it as part of our approval process, I would say that either, and it's certainly up to you with your motion, but we can just approve or deny if you believe that's the more appropriate way to go. So, and not with any disclaimers, because I don't believe those disclaimers are appropriate. And, Mr. Solicitor, please, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
I would, I would concur. I think it's not for the town. We have a lot of times, we have property owners that get into disputes with one another, and the town is dragged into the middle, and we try not to be. Likewise, here, you know, between tenants of the same establishment, the town shouldn't be taking sides one way or another. And as you said, if they've met all the requirements, and that was my first thing, if they meet all the requirements, you really don't have grounds to deny it. When I first talked to Councilman Harrischoff, I don't, he didn't have any of this in writing, and none of his things.
Yes, I had, I should have read it to you, I guess.
No, I was told it was an exclusivity clause that they couldn't rent to someone else in the, in the same plaza, which is a common retail thing. But this is not that at all. This is exclusivity and assist in booking of business that basically it's, it actually limits the hotel more than the rest of the place. It's saying that the hotel, if they're having weddings and events like that, first of all, they're agreeing to split the cost of the hotel group and banquet catering sales coordinator between the landlord and the restaurant. And then they're agreeing that it's not going to be a wedding. The hotel can't book a wedding and bring in an outside caterer for the wedding. That's what this is saying.
Okay.
So when I look at that now, when I finally see it in writing, I, I do think there's not even any grounds to delay it at this point, which is different from before I saw it.
And I think it's fair to say that we all have, certainly we're sympathetic to the concerns, and we appreciate Councilman Harrischoff bringing that to our attention. But if there's, I guess, on a straightforward factual basis, if there's no reason we have to say no, and then I don't, but I'm going to leave that up to my colleagues for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the vitrifying license for Empire Tea and Coffee.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I would just-
There's a motion and a second, and go ahead, Mr. Harrischoff. Absolutely, go ahead.
I would like to suggest if there's any party here that would represent the other side of this question, that perhaps that person should provide us some testimony.
Come on up, please.
Welcome, sir.
If you could state your name for the record, please. I know who you are, but-
Siweshanat, live on 113 Bradford Street.
Welcome.
I understand what, under councilmen, I understand what the legal council's saying, but the way I read it, if you read the first line, "Laser designate Leacy as its exclusive third-party food and beverage service provider." Rest is all explanation in my mind. And I am not a lawyer. But what I'm saying is, this has to be considered, and it is not the town council's responsibility to call other people's dispute.
Right.
But it should not be passed tonight. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But can you give us a little bit more, I mean, I think, you know, to, it's somewhat obvious, like, because you own the restaurant, but I don't see how, what like a coffee shop does is close to what you do because you're like considered a fine dining.
Very good question.
And you also have the waterside there as well.
Exactly. Very good question. I run breakfast and lunch all the weekend, seven days a week lunch. If you have another licensee running another place, it competes with me. And that is not a bad thing. But my lease agreement, in my understanding, should not let that happen.
But isn't that more like a, you, you sort of like sit down breakfast and lunch? I mean, you get, somebody's not going to run in there and get a coffee and a muffin to go into, at your restaurant.
I used to do breakfast for the hotel. It is not anymore. So there is another possibility right there.
But I mean, those of us in the audience, for example, who, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand this.
No, I understand it.
Those of us, those of us who are here, I mean, of all the places that I would think of to stop and run in and get a muffin and a coffee or tea, whatever I'm going to do, and eat it while I'm dri, you know, police can cover their ears, but eat it while I'm driving to work. Or take it to work with me, or whatever the case may be. I would never in a million years think to stop at your place. Because that's not how I think of what you do. You know, there's like other places that are in, down in Bristol that do that.
So why shouldn't I be entitled to same?
Oh, you, oh, you certainly could. I mean, if you wanted to change your-
I'm in existing business.
Wait, so I don't think anybody would argue the fact that if you wanted to get into that, that you couldn't do it? I don't know if that would then exclude him from doing that. That wouldn't exclude him from doing that either, right, Andy? If that's what he wanted to go into that business model and try that?
As far, sorry. I didn't want to read you the whole paragraphs and so forth, but as far as I can see, all this is, is the cooperation as to booking of group businesses, comma banquet business, or other similar hotel business. And that's what this relies on. That's basically, as I said, saying the hotel couldn't book a convention, a small convention business meeting or wedding and bring in an outside caterer to do that. By this agreement, they must use him as their caterer if they bring in any kind of that business. And they further agree to split the cost of a person who's going to try to develop that business. That's why I don't think you can read that first sentence, designates it as exclusive third-party in isolation. And even if you did, that's not the way I've always seen it, the leases that I do. It doesn't say that it's your third-party provider. It basically says, if you, if you had a shopping center lease, and you know, CVS goes in, then it says very, you know, there shall be no other pharmacy or no other business that does the following, and they list specifically, there's, it's an explicit negative clause in that kind of lease that prohibits the competition. And I'm not saying they couldn't have it, but on the page that's provided to me, this particular paragraph is going the other way.
Well, with respect to Andy, I think this section 1.16 actually covers more than one contingency. And my view is that the initial sentence is one subject, and the subsequent sentence is the one for designated cooperation between the two parties. Anyway, I don't think we're here to solve the dispute, but I think we're sensible to recognize that the dispute exists. And I would prefer to give you some time to go through it, which I think you're probably going to have to work it out between yourselves, no matter what we vote on. But I would rather delay our vote for, for weeks, though, give you a chance to solve it.
I appreciate that.
And sorry, I understand where you're coming from, but from the evidence that I'm hearing tonight, there is no reason why I would not, would turn this person down or vote against them, you know what I mean, from, from the legal counsel that we're hearing tonight. So I hope you, you understand. And I do remember back quite a few years ago, there was a coffee shop, I remember, near the hotel, down, down the street a little bit from there. But anyway, I just, you know, hopefully this gets worked out.
The thing that I find, and I agree with, with Tim on, on that, the thing that I find most perplexing would be the fact that if it was exclusive in some way, that the landlord should never have rented the space to the, to Empire Tea and Coffee, you know, but they have, and they've already invested time and effort and money, I would imagine, to redo their building. So I, I see those, I see each one of those businesses down there, those restaurant, you know, food establishments as, as different ends of, you know, all ends of the spectrum, a sort of, you know, a whole continuum of different types of things that you can get, types of food, lunch, dinner, coffee, you know, late night something or other snack. So I don't, I don't see it that way, and I apologize because I don't, I don't see it as a conflict with the, you know, like, you have a reputation of a really fine dining establishment, and I don't see this in that same way as a, as a competition to that. But if you wanted to do that morning, what I would consider most of that business is going to be morning to mid-afternoon, from, from what I see, you know, in places near to where I work in Providence area, then I would think that, that you're certainly free to go into that and open up like a, sort of grab-and-go little spot within your, within your establishment. So. So.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For me, I find it very frustrating that I was just given this tonight and I did not even see what you furnished to the solicitor. And welcome, we're glad that you want to leave Aquinic Island for an expansion to our town, so thank you. I also understand your point of whether it has to do with just coffee and muffins to compete with fine dining, you're just looking for the legalities of this contract in a private way of your establishment within the hotel. And as my colleague stated, you know, time and time again, we try to strive so when businesses come, whether it be yours or this gentleman here, that it's streamlined in a fashion where, that's why I find it frustrating, I didn't have time to read the wording, I didn't see that wording, so I, you know, forgive me because I like to do my due diligence and that's why I do my homework for every case, to make a sound decision. But I also go by the recommendations of my solicitor here tonight to guide us. But similar to Vice Chairman Sweeney's motion that he started out with, can we make the motion with a review in a month and then come back in a month and do it that way to see if something happened? I'm just trying to find another way where we can approve it so we're not holding up a business owner, but yet covering ourselves on the other end.
Um.
And again, I, I feel bad I have to ask you these questions right now, but there's no other way.
No, I understand that. We're here tonight. And it's hard, it's, it's four weeks, it's not three weeks away to the next council meeting. I don't know that what that would do, other than do the same thing, it would delay the opening for a month, they're not going to get everything geared up to do it. I guess I would point out, I mean, if, if it's a valid enforceable thing, it can be enforced through the courts. And your vitaling license is not forever, they do come up for renewal at the end of November. And normally it's just a list and whatnot, but it does come up and if there's an issue at that point, I think that's an ideal thing. If you end up having any resolution with this at any time, you can, you know, bring that to the council, say, okay, this is, this is what I've got from the courts, you've got that, that would be the time to do it when they come back up for their renewal. That would be my suggestion.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
So that's a four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the petition of St. Elizabeth's Church San O Cristo Feast Committee requests one-day dancing and entertainment licenses for September 9th, 10th, 11th, and 11th, 2016. You have recommendations from the town administrator, fire chief and chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
Upon the approval of the department heads and administration with all the ordinances and recommendations of the dates and times specified for the one-day dance and entertainment license, I move to grant to the applicant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town councils, item E1, and this is, is the annual license renewals of private investigators' licenses. You have recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that we approve this longstanding fine event as we've done so many times in the past.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Clerk.
Next item.
Mr. Clerk, did we skip D5? The vice chair just pointed that out to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Saw those as linked together, thank you. The item D5, this was the request of Charles Barone, Empire Tea and Coffee requesting a holiday sales license.
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're back now to F1.
We are.
We have the petition of John and Gwenda McQuilkin, 126 Thame Street, request council consideration for two curb cuts, one on Church Street and one on Thame Street. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator and director of Public Works.
I reached out to the applicant today. The director of Public Works was suggesting denial because it went, it was against a few of our ordinances and the applicant was willing to continue this to our next meeting and set up a meeting with the Kevin McBride, our director of DPW on Tuesday to go take a look at it and see if we can find a yes here. And if we do, if everyone recalls the reason why this is on our agenda and typically, well, not typically, but all the time curb cuts are in our consent agenda, it's here because there was a denial suggestion or recommendation for denial. So if we do in fact find a positive, this will, this won't be on our agenda again. The applicant was willing to look at avenues and certainly DPW director was also looking for a yes. So we'll see if we can find that. So can I have a motion to continue that?
So move to continue the matter until the meeting of August 24th.
Is there a second? Second? Mary, did you have a question?
No, no, it was just a, again, save the comment, I mean, you're going to lose the parking space, but right now they're parking their cars on the street, so you'll be getting their cars into the driveway and so that, I would encourage driveways in downtown, it's, it's a double edged sword. There's not enough parking and then they, and then you go down looking for parking and this curb cuts because of driveways, you know, it's, it's.
I, I won't speak for the director, but I know that was part of his concern on it. But again, I know that our goal is to see if we can find a positive here and I believe that we all will, and more specifically the director will with the applicant.
Right, no, I believe in the driveway.
Did we vote on that? No, we didn't. I had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of Darlene Brown, 38 Collin Street, request council consideration for accessible parking spaces at the first reading. You have recommendation of the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Motion this constitutes for a first reading? Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is the petition of James Mediris, 43 Rosedale Drive, request council consideration for the establishment of a tax credit for Bristol volunteer fire department members.
James, are you here? Come on up, please.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you fix that mic? Thank you, sir.
Jim Mediris, 43 Rosedale Drive. I'm sure you all got my letter, it sums it up. This is only to initiate, the start of, introduce myself, let the council know. In the meantime, Mr. Sweeney was kind enough to afford himself, volunteer himself. I also have Dave Benavides. Not looking for much, but we're a lo, we're a little distance away, but I'll be persistent. So as my letter says, a member of the town council will be willing to assist myself, which Mr. Sweeney has come forward, and another member of Bristol Fire Department, which is Dave Benavides, in order to establish guidelines for tax credit deduction somewhat similar to elderly or veterans. Any consideration on this matter will be deeply appreciated. My goal is to establish a tax credit for the men and women of Bristol Volunteer Fire Department before tax assessments are in place for the year 217 to 218. And I just want to introduce myself. I want to, I know I'm going to need the help of the treasury and the legality, just to say the least.
I think it's a great idea and I think that, you know, we should, I hope Tony, because I work for Tony, would make Julie our, our town treasurer available and/or our assessor and certainly the, the chief. Because I think, I think that is a, I read it, I read it yesterday and I thought, well, that's a really good idea. And obviously we need some guidelines as to how many years of service or whatever. And, but our, we're very, very, very fortunate that we have a volunteer department and one that is as fantastic as the one we have. And I think this would just, you know, be a great thing to show our appreciation.
I think Councilman Perella puts that very well. I think she speaks for all of us in everything that she just said. Chief, did you want to add?
No, just Jim had spoken to me a while back, so I'm glad he kept his forward with it. Certainly we have to look at policy procedure and fiscal note to assess the impacts that they will have on us, but I think it's, it's not something that is prevalent, but it does exist in other communities, other states. It's not a matter of they can take a look at it and see what we can do with it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's a, it's a great idea and I encourage all my, my colleagues to also contribute and help out as well because, you know, it's going to take a lot of research and analysis to look at the various scenarios to see what's going to fit and what's going to work. So anyway, I'm, I'm in support and I'm here to help out wherever I can.
I believe we see this in other communities because of the appreciation and the assessment of volunteer firefighters throughout the states and communities. But also we see programs such as military. And another thing is that we're starting to see is Homestead for Seniors also with certain guidelines to try to make it affordable for seniors to stay in your community because of everything that's transpiring with, such as fiscal responsibility to afford seniors to stay in their house because of the affordability housing that we're trying to accomplish. I think as the vice chair had mentioned about the extensive research and study, when we're going to have the treasurer and the tax assessor and all the like minds on something like this to do with the fiscal budget going forward as a town, maybe we could think of everything as a whole since it's all going to be on the same topic. So I'm looking forward to it and working with everybody.
Cool, if I'm not mistaken, the veterans organizations were in not long ago, am I correct in looking to maybe up that exemption a little bit, if, if I'm not mistaken?
It was mainly for a review of some of the folks because some of them had been declared not eligible.
Right, 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 fix that. I mean, in many cases, these exemptions or credits are not really a ton of money. They're, they're relatively small amounts of money, but every, everything helps, you know, for the taxpayer and it also sends a message of appreciation, I think, as well. So I'm anxious to see the work that comes out of this.
So it seemed appropriate to me that we'd get a motion to refer this to the administrator, the fire chief, the treasurer and the assessor. And then, and what we're going to refer this, we won't continue this and we can have some work done on that. And then through those people, and then obviously the vice chair has also mentioned that and I'm sure all of us have, have direct interest in this, see if we can have a proposal brought back in front of us, something that we can look at and, and hear the inputs of how many years someone's been on service, is a life member, all of those things. And as Councilman Stewart's also mentioned and actually Councilman Perella, maybe we should look at this with a little bit bigger net and consider other things that we've been considering in the past, including veterans and elderly. So, and we can keep them separate but together. So there's, but if we're going to look into these numbers, it makes sense to look at how it impacts on the greater scheme.
I would just like to add one, I, so move, but I'd like to add one thing on that and that is, in referring it to all those folks which are, are big, all the people that I was, would suggest, I, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, you know, the public members, Mr. Mediris, or other folks, one or two other people from the community that may have an interest in, in the fire department. So if that's the community, it's not, wouldn't just be like the town government officials, but others?
It was my hope from saying it that way.
I'm sure you meant that.
I absolutely did, is that there would, this would not be a few people making a decision for many. This would be many people making decision for many. There would be lots of input because ultimately we're going to ask those questions, so we might as well have the answers before it comes back in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's fine to designate the people you have to study this and go through the various ramifications and I'll vote towards approving that study. But on the other hand, I don't necessarily think it's a good idea and I'll tell you why. We revere our fire department, of course, and we provide some compensation. But this type of a compensation possibly could open Pandora's box of every kind of organization coming in and asking for the same thing. And so I'm not, at this point, in favor of the new initiative, but I am in favor of studying it.
Okay. So we had a motion, I, I'm sorry, did we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Just lastly, whenever any of yourselves as firefighters come in front of us, Chief, thank you for your service.
You know, let's say that again.
I agree.
Councilman Stewart.
Thank you for your service.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is your public service appointment section of the agenda, item G1A, Historic District Commission, with term to expire in July of 2019. You have Mary C. Millard of 620 Hope Street, interest in reappointment.
I move that we reappoint Mary Millard to the Historic District Commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item was, was opened, or rather opened at your last council meeting and it is here for a, to hear a recommendation on the previous bid. This is bid number 846 for the Constitution Street Pump Station, Silver Creek Pump Station improvements. The recommendation is provided by Beta Group and the town administrator.
Mr. Chairman, at the request of the council, you asked us to go back and sharpen pencils and with Jose and Beta, with Jose and Beta's assistance, we were able to sharpen the pencil by $431,910.
Well, that's a pretty darn good accomplishment.
If we ask you to go back again, what happens?
We wore out the eraser in the pencil.
And you get it to $2 million.
That's wonderful. That's, I think that's, that's a much better place than where we were, so.
Certainly.
So what comments does this council have?
We still refer to the administration to act in the best interest on behalf of this bid.
Yeah, second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is a petition of Clara Reed, 11 Noise Avenue, request council consideration for reducing the speed limit on Noise Avenue to 20 miles per hour. This was continued from July 6th.
So this gives us a moment to welcome Captain Burke in place of Chief Canario this evening. Maybe you could speak on, on the police department's behalf on this one?
Sure.
So just to remind everyone, this was a request to, to put a speed limit sign lowering the speed limit on Noise Ave. We continue this item on the chief's request that he could do some research on it and Captain Burke's going to share that research.
Sure. Chief Canario had two sergeants complete some memorandums on this, who researched this topic. Both sergeants indicated in the memorandums to the chief that they find no reason to lower the speed limit or do any other types of speed reduction measures moving forward. The chief's memo to the council is, is that he has assigned Sergeant Moss to speak with petitioners and other residents on Noise Avenue. We also had assigned periodic patrol units observe vehicles traveling on that roadway for any speeders, none were identified. Also that the street was not identified as a cut through in any way, that it appears that the road is utilized by the residents who live on that, that roadway. One of the sergeants, Sergeant Wasney indicates that when he did look at the roadway, that it is very narrow and it appears to be very difficult to increase the speed other than 25 miles per hour due to the road's narrow width and also its short length. So based on all the information and speaking with the residents and all the observations that the officers put into this, it's the, the chief's recommendation, like I said, that, that it not be reduced in that the speed, kept at 45 miles per hour.
Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
So upon hearing the investigation and study, which our police department on every occasion such as these cases, takes safety of the utmost importance for any applicant, I'm going to take the recommendations of the police department and the comments of Captain Burke that we deny this applicant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your thorough study on this, really helpful.
The next item is item H3. This is correspondence from Anthony Barrow, managing principal of E2 Sol LLC, request for approval of property assessed clean energy program, PACE, in Bristol. This was continued from July 6th in anticipation of a review by the solicitor. Solicitor provides. for approval of Property Assess Clean Energy Program, PACE, in Bristol. This was continued from July 6th in anticipation of a review by the solicitor. Solicitor provides a memorandum on the, on the item.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Ryan Mulcahy. I'm with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. For those of you who might not be familiar with, familiar with our new name, we were known as the Clean Water Finance Agency up until last year. So, I'm here tonight to talk about CPACE. CPACE, which stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy, is an innovative project financing tool that allows commercial property owners to access attractive financing terms for energy efficiency or renewable energy projects. So, eligible properties would include retail, office, industrial, multifamily of five or more units, nonprofits, hotels, healthcare. And eligible property improvements, again, energy efficiency, virtually any improvement to the property that would reduce energy usage, or that creates clean energy, so that would be solar panels or, or the like. I wanna emphasize that CPACE projects do not use taxpayer dollars to be funded. We're basically connecting private capital lenders, like banks or credit unions, with the property owners. So, state law, which created the program, requires that any town or city that wishes to allow businesses located within their borders to participate in the program have to pass a resolution stating that they wish to participate. We've had seven municipalities in Rhode Island opt to do so thus far. Those would be Charlestown, East Providence, Middletown, Pawtucket, Smithfield, South Kingston, and West Warwick. The town's role in administering the program is really very minimal. It's limited to approving the resolution, as I mentioned. Placing a tax lien on the property, this is a voluntary lien that the property owner agrees to have placed on their property. The Infrastructure Bank will pay any associated fees if you charge a filing fee. And the final responsibility is that should, should there be a tax sale of a property that has a PAC lien on it, we would just ask that we be noticed. Aside from that, there's, there's no liability on the town, and I think the solicitor could speak more to that, but there's no liability if a property goes into foreclosure, et cetera. So, I, you know, I'd be, I'd be willing to answer any questions that you might have, or?
Well, I think that last statement, that there's no liability, is very important to us, but I don't actually quite understand exactly how it works. Suppose there's a small company and they wanna get involved in this, and we've passed this, and they go ahead. What actually happens?
Yeah, so, we at the Infrastructure Bank have hired a third-party program administrator. Their name is Sustainable Real Estate Solutions, or SRS. They run the program that is very similar to this program. They run it in Connecticut. And so, let's say you had a property owner that was interested in, in taking advantage of this program. They would apply through SRS, which basically verifies that what they wanna do meets the guidelines of the program. They conduct a technical review to make sure that, basically, that the property owner's not being taken advantage of by a contractor, you know, that, that the project is actually going to deliver the savings that the property owner expects. So, I, I mentioned quickly that we would ask you to place a lien on the property, and that lien is used as security for a loan provided by a private capital provider. That lien is actually senior to any existing mortgage that might be on the property. So, we do require that any mortgage holders provide written consent, because we're basically jumping in front of them in line. But that lien is viewed as very secure by, by a bank, basically. And so, that's used as security for the loan that is then provided to the property owner to conduct whatever the improvements were.
And that presumably would be a lien that would stand behind a bank mortgage or some other lien that may exist.
It, it is, it's ahead of any mortgage on the property, but it is, it continues to remain junior to your municipal taxes.
Well, it strikes me that's mainly an issue for the businessman or the property owner, than not an issue for the town.
That's, that's correct.
I don't believe there's any downside to the town, is there?
I'm laughing because you understand it perfectly. In fact, we had a meeting last week, and I know this was supposed to be on our last agenda, and, and when something seems too good to be true, you really get the red flags raising. And so, we sat with them, and Brian and others, Diane and Tony and Julie were there, just, we wanted to make sure this was appropriate, and Brian obviously did a great job of sharing the particulars. And I think I asked kinda what Halls suggested, which was, yeah, but what's, why do we need, you know, where's, where's the catch? Where's the other shoe kinda falling? And I think the key was what Brian said, which was the, the key is that you can put a lien on the property, and this process allows that to happen. So, a business owner who used to have to come up with $100,000 alone, $100,000 alone and paid over a smaller time, this allows a longer-term repayment, making the project more viable. The town being involved just allows this process to happen, but is not engaged in it only in the fact that we make sure that the lien is recorded, and that's where our involvement stops, kind of. And when I say it like that is that we're very much a fan of, of being as efficient as possible, to use the least amount of energy as possible, to use solar when possible, and if this is a tool to allow our business owners to take advantage of things they wouldn't normally be able to, then gosh, we should do it.
So, I just had two, two quick questions for you.
Sure.
So, let me go with that one first, and that is, the only thing that I see in the memo from our solicitor is that the agreement does not contain an indemnification clause whereby the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank agrees to indemnify the town for claims arising from the Infrastructure Bank's actions. Has that come up in any other community, or?
It does. It does contain it.
Oh, did I misread that? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I take that back, then.
See, it keeps getting better all the time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said it's like, it's not, okay, okay, okay. So, let me go to my other scenario, then. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, this one is just as easy to answer.
And this is, no, this is why when they say to me, "You should be elector at church", I go, "I'm not really a good reader allowed, so that is not a good idea." Gosh, I don't know what I would say, right? So, I kinda view this as, and tell me if, if this is an analogy, or very similar. The solar project that's going on for residential consumers right now, that if we have the money, can put up, the city, the towns have selected a vendor, and what this would do is sort of carry that concept of green energy to commercial establishments, but provides a, provides a source of funding, so they don't have to go out to their own bank. Is that right? Or they can apply to the Infrastructure Bank and then?
Yeah, so, I, I think the first part of what you, you said is correct, in that it does expand access to renewables to the commercial sector. But I would just make two distinctions. First of all, whereas in the program that you're referencing, I believe there's just one vendor that the town works with, in this, it's any vendor that we've qualified, and basically, all that means is they have the licenses that they need to operate in Rhode Island, and they've taken a, a short training seminar on the program. And the second part is, we at the Infrastructure Bank are not in the business of lending money for this. So, it's all private, private banks, basically, and if you're a property owner, you can work with, if you've got a bank already, you could use them. We also, if you don't have a, a capital provider that you would like to work with, we have kind of a bidding process that we will put projects through, where we will have all the capital providers, we'll send a notice, oh, hey, we've got this project, you know, send some terms over, and then we can go to the property owner and give them to them.
So, you will help them every step of the way to be able to?
Absolutely, yeah. That's, that's really what we hired this third-party group to do as well, this SRS company. They are kind of our, our feet on the ground on a daily basis.
See, I like, too, that you were, as Mary just mentioned, that you're walking them through the process. You buy a car, and you look at the sticker, and it says you get 28 miles per gallon. You look at a solar panel, and it tells you stuff, and you have no idea if it's actually doing what it's supposed to do, and-
Right.
I like that you're making sure that the return on investment is there, not only financially, but, you know, on the green end of things, so.
Right, right. Yeah, they do a very in-depth financial and technical analysis.
Thank you for coming down. Just for clarity on all the comments, we as a municipality, if we declined this evening, it wouldn't afford the businesses or commercial properties to enter an agreement with the Infrastructure Bank. And that's the relationship with municipalities as a whole, is the municipality has to agree to this relationship. And as all the points were stated, it's kinda like a no-brainer, because it's, it's no liability on our part, so it's actually a pro-business and pro-commercial incentive as an outlet to have this relationship with the Infrastructure Bank, so.
Well put. Well put.
So.
So, without hearing anything more positive-
I'll make a motion that we-
I'm moved to adopt the draft of what was presented for this agreement.
I'll second the motion.
And this resolution.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? I can say this, is that it was suggested, and I, and I, I think we all agree with this, is that there should be a workshop, not with the council, but for business owners moving forward, that people can understand what's available to you, how to take advantage of these things, and then make an informed decision of whether or not you wanna take the next step.
We've started working with-
Yeah, I think that's a very important idea.
Excellent. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next item, also continued from July 6th, was Councilman Stewart's request for a status and workshop schedule for the new renewable distributed energy alternative at Bristol landfill.
So, I know we have a couple interviews, Mr. Clerk, coming up, and I didn't know how extensive of when we have this workshop and the discussion involved, if we can kinda come to a consensus to maybe schedule the interviews and that workshop. I had a couple dates, but I guess the 24th is council meeting. The Wednesday before that would be-
The 17th.
17th?
Yes.
And?
It would be better for me if it was like the Tuesday-
Or Thursday?
Or Monday of the week of the 24th, just because, you know, like, we know we have the council meeting that week, so if there's an opportunity to do anything else, that you probably can't do it.
So, the 15th?
29th?
Without, we would have to look at the town's schedule, too, if there's any conflicts with you, Diane, with any other boards.
I was talking about the 13th. I was talking about the 23rd or the 22nd.
Oh, okay.
Like, that week, if that's possible.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna be away, but I don't know what day is that, 17th.
Yes. So, why don't we do this? How about if we tentatively shoot for the 22nd of August? That is a Monday. Does anybody have any concerns with that date?
No, works for me.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, let's, let's tentatively shoot for August 22nd, and we can schedule that workshop along with interviews. And I said tentative, so we'll make sure that it's, we have a area to work within.
It's a curious coincidence this discussion is tonight, because it was announced today that in Russia, where there was the horrible Chernobyl incident many years ago, there are acres and acres and acres, equivalent to three times the area of Manhattan, where nobody can let go there. And they're gonna put solar cells there, and they have the benefit of very large transmission lines that remain because of Chernobyl using it before it blew up. So, I guess this is something's happening everywhere, and we ought to certainly look at it. I do think that the, as Mary referred to, the previous suggestion on this some years ago was not a very good deal, and I think whatever we do there, we need to make sure that it benefits the town of Bristol financially and not just only somebody else.
Agreed. The clerk just asked, does 6 o'clock work for everyone? And we're gonna make sure that we say that a couple of times. Because we usually do 7.
Some of you all, you guys were minus that day, yes.
Pointing at myself on that.
With the interviews being first, right?
Yes. So, we're gonna do interviews and a workshop with the solar for, we keep saying it, let me just clarify that, Councilman Stewart's talking about the solar on, the potential solar on the landfill, so we can garner electricity there, and town can garner income from it while it's not being used right now. Obviously, there's lots of steps that have to go through, but they can't get there without talking about it, so.
Gets the ball rolling.
Exactly. So, we have a motion. Do we have a motion? No, we don't, so.
A motion to schedule the workshop for the said new renewable distributed energy at the landfill on August 22nd at 6 o'clock.
2nd at 6:00 PM.
At 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, item I1, also from Councilman Stewart. This is his request for status update on the construction easements and final draft of the Tanyard Brook Phase 2 plan.
So, Tony?
Sure, yes. The, the easements have been drafted. They're ready to go. They'll be going out next week. Unfortunately, we still have five people that we have not been able to contact, so we still trying to chase those individuals down. The plans are approximately 75% of the design completed. And at the current time, they're working on updating the budgetary cost estimate as well as utility coordination. Those are the items that they'll be working on. The next step is actually, once the easements go out, is to get an appraiser to appraise the properties of all the individual, I mean, all the residents will be impacted by the Tanyard Brook. So, it's not just easements going out. We did that, and there was more of a survey for what need to be done, I mean, how they would be impacted, impacted. Now, it's more to get the cost so that we can put a budget together going forward.
Tell us what, or tell me, maybe everybody else knows, but what, what costs would be involved? What appraisal are we doing? What would, what would this impact? How does it change the property value?
The, it really doesn't change the value of the property, it's just to assess what is the impact of the residents as the construction takes place. So, in other words, let's say-
Inconvenience factor, is that what you mean?
Well, it'll be more of, well, not so much that, but if a fence has to be removed, the yard work, actually, Diane and I, she reminded me of this one today, and she says, "Don't forget to mention, what happened the last time we went in and did the yards? When people were impacted on the yards, a lot of the work was done actually by a contractor of our, well, through the, the Tanyard Brook contract, that we actually were responsible for that. This time around, we really don't wanna be in that, because we've had some issues with some of the, of the yards where we had to go back and repair and redo the grass, and then there was all kinds of issues. They did not have the right tree in the right place, and so we had to have the landscaper go back and move the, the tree and so forth. So, going forward, we don't wanna get in that predicament, so that's where we need an appraiser to assess what is the cost, the impact to each home resident, so that we don't have to be, we say, okay, what is the cost? Here's your check. You hire a landscaper, you do the work that needs to be done, we done."
So, we're, we're going to pay them to do it, rather than, like, in the past, they were given back, like, they were made whole by us doing all the work.
That is correct, yes.
Interesting, okay.
Tony, do you think it would be constructive to ask either some of your staff or maybe Kevin from Beta to come in at a future meeting like in August to tell us a little more about how this is all going? I have two reasons to suggest that. One is that I think we'd like to know a little more about the details, but perhaps more than that, if you get Beta in and they tell you what they're gonna do, it forms a sort of a commitment to make them hurry up.
There should not be a problem at all to get them here for the next meeting.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we could do that on the 24th of August, if you're willing to.
Well, by Councilman Hevershaw's comments, that's where I was going. Why I put this on the agenda is to, the timeline that we keep stressing on these projects that take years, and we don't wanna rush them when we're going through these, as, that approach has already been discussed by Beta in front of us, of what the town administrator just discussed, of, you know, incurring all those costs with these residents, and we all agreed. Back in April, we discussed what was still pending with Beta, so they can put out their permitting processes. We, as a council, have a referendum come this November to work in tandem with our capital projects, such as these flooding issues. So, timelines are crucial when moving projects in a cautious way, but back in April, we're at the same status, and then we were supposed to follow up in May, but I understood with the time and the essence of, you know, the busy schedule and the people that had to be notified, has the compliance officer reached out to these people? Because that was mentioned, any extreme to expedite this process with Beta, to the councilman's point, because we have to keep a timeline with these projects, so the shovel ready when we execute the funding mechanisms, they can work in tandem. And with all due respect, that's why I just like to do these brief- And with all due respect, that's why I just like to do these briefings on these projects, so.
So to your question, has any, Cheryl has actually made every effort to chase on different addresses and phone numbers, so we did not have the good compliance officer. Cheryl has made every effort to reach out to those folks, and that's why we don't want to hold the process, but go forward and send all the easements to the, to all the residents that we've already contacted to go ahead with the process. In the meantime, we will continue to pursue that.
And as I just stated, we want to be cautious, but I just believe with a lot of projects this council has addressed for many years, we have to keep that timeline. It's crucial for these projects, so that's why I like Councilman Herashev's suggestion, bring Beta in. At that next meeting though, I think we should have more solidified answers from these residents and start having these permits going out so we can have a good view on going, where we end up in November with our budget going forward.
So would they be coming in on the 22nd?
It will be the 24th.
24th, okay.
Yes. 24th would be our next regular scheduled. So, is that a motion on, with including Halsey's?
So we asked Beta to come on the 24th.
Okay. Discussion? I'm going to add just one thing, that I agree, this is very important for us to stay on time and on budget. We all agree on that. We also, this is a project that is massive, it impacts the neighbors. I'm interested to hear how we implement these changes in repairs to the property, making sure that the residents are comfortable with this and that the outcome is what we all want, including the resident, so, and I'm sure that's top of mind awareness, so.
We actually, when we met with each one of them, that was our statement to them. Do you have a problem, says, we love it, because then we can hire our own landscaper, you know, rather than just have somebody come in and plant the trees and.
As long as they're happy and everything gets done the way it's supposed to.
They just want to be sure that Beta would be leaving a base for them to work from, and that was stated, that's not a problem at all.
Perfect. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item, also from Councilman Stewart, regarding the Bristol County Water Authority interconnect with East Providence and Pawtucket.
So here's another topic that is a high priority for our community, just like the Tanyard Brook, and we've been at this for many years, and we've been trying to follow a redundant alternative source of water. And the chairman of BCWA, he outlined in K1, which is the following item, that they're going forward with the RFP and the draft planning for the interconnect of the six-inch pipe to East Providence. And I just want to update the people that, even though we're a little behind last year with the general assembly and all the negotiations that took place for the funding that was going to be attached to that, it is crucial that, I believe, that they're going forward with this step. It was approved by the tri-town councils, and this will give 2 million gallons of water as a backup safety. But going forward, I think, again, we have to be a little vigilant and going forward with Phase 2, bring our directors in, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, and try to get an update from them, because there's other issues involved with other projects going, and I've been noticing in the report some liabilities. So I would like a report from our directors to this council and the public for maybe the next meeting, if that is possible. And I just wanted to give an update that they also have been very good at giving us updates for Medicum Avenue, and in a positive aspect of that project, of that new water main, will bring, alleviate some pressure in the northern parts of towns that, again, was years in the coming. So we've been at this for years, we're keeping on top of it, and it's a high priority, and I think this is another timeline issue, where we have to have every place card set forth so when the new general assembly goes back in January, we already have everyone in place to go after those funds for this project, so.
Well, you know, this has been a very annoying project in that we really had a good chance to get a lot of money two years ago, when that possibility of our sharing in a large state fund issue was up. And the reason we didn't get it was that the director of the Bristol County Water Authority didn't get around to setting up the proposition soon enough for us to get that funding. So I think that that just goes to show that we've got to be kicking that organization in the behind to get them to do things.
Agreed.
Well, should they come to the council meeting, should they come to the workshop on the 22nd?
I would think, in my own personal opinion, I think we're getting an update not only for the council but for the people of Bristol. So we have, obviously, a lot of people watch at home, so being able to hear that information and what's going on directly from our directors, I think is beneficial. Certainly, I understand the point of having a little bit, maybe more, time to talk about it, but I think it's also important that we share it to the greater public, if you will. That's my two cents.
So I make a motion that we schedule our three directors to come for the August 24th meeting and discuss this and continue this matter.
All second motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the periodic report provided by the Bristol County Water Authority Director Alan Klepper.
Seeing we just talked about that, I make a motion to receive and file.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next several items are for executive session, which will be at the conclusion of the public agenda. The next item is the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
So we promised we would keep things top of mind. We have a ballot question that Councilman Stewart touched on, wanted to remind everybody, that's coming up, obviously, in our November ballot, which will be the bond question or bond referendum for $17 million. It sounds like a lot of money, because it is. That money would not be spent all at the same time. That money, just to remind everybody, includes, but not limited to, road improvements, open space purchase, the Marina expansion, that's near and dear to my heart and all of our hearts, but I know I've been focusing on that one, and I think we all want that. That is a moneymaker, not only for revenues from the slips, but it also is a wonderful opportunity for our residents to be downtown and non-residents to bring people into the downtown and into Bristol in general, because Bristol, of course, is not just downtown. But it gives an opportunity to our local businesses to see more faces, to see more people, and for more people to hopefully enjoy the waterfront, too. So I think it's a win-win-win. So when that comes around, you're going to see that. Please ask us questions. Please, what do you want to know about the bond? How does it work? Where does it go from here? Because we see the value in it, and there's a lot of benefits, including some public building maintenance that we can take advantage of, and that'll allow us to budget the money without affecting our budget that much.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, it's important to.
Thank you.
I think it's important to emphasize on that one, that the intention is not to necessarily rush out and spend 17.
It is absolutely not that.
But that it's intended to provide financing for good projects over a period of years.
Well put. And it's also important to note that we, the council, can actually go out to bond without going to the voters, but we, the council, believe that it's appropriate to go to the voters and ask and share so you understand why we, what we want to do to better Bristol, whether it's the roads, whether it's, as Vice Chair Sweeney just mentioned, and Councilman Stewart brought up too, which is drainage, a massive continued effort on all of that. School update, what's going on with that? And I can tell you that we have executive session this evening. This council and this town have not forgotten that taxes went up because of this, and we have not stopped looking into opportunities to go the other way with those, to make those adjustments and make our fair share paid. We don't want other people's money, we just don't want them to have ours. That's it in a nutshell. And I didn't have an opportunity to do this last time, but my aunt Dot passed away, Dorothy Cudero passed away a couple of weeks ago, and the reason why I bring that up, thank you, is that she worked for the town for quite a while, and the clerk was kind enough to give me some basic information. She started in 1990, she worked for a clerk in the DP, as a clerk, in the DPW, she worked for community development and retired in 2006 from recreation. She was, and Halsey can attest to this, and I'm sure he will, a massive part about why we have the Christmas celebration downtown. Obviously, Halsey was too, and there was a lot of people, but she was really a big driving force on that. One of those quiet giants, you know, sat silently, but she didn't mess with her, kind of thing. She always had a smile on her face. And I thought it was appropriate that I bring that up and just thank her. I know she's not with us anymore, but she did a great job for us and we appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
If I could just add to that for my regular time, she was terrific. Doty was really the one that came in with the idea, and we immediately embraced it. And like you say, she was never argumentative or forceful and antagonistic, but she was like, she'd have a hold of your ankles and never let go so that you knew she was there to make you do things. Just the best kind of Bristol citizen, and she was marvelous.
Yeah, good evening, just, and I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, I'm on the planning board for the Bristol Harbor Festival, just wanted to do a quick commercial here, just to remind you that the tickets are still available. So the Bristol Harbor Festival is going to be August 13th. There are two sittings for the dinners, 4:30 and 6:30. You can get the tickets through the Harbor Master or through myself. It includes a Little Neck boil, it's $20 per person, free hot dogs for kids with Little Neck's boil purchase, Cash Raw Bar, and there's going to be live bands, there's going to be a Sunset Cruise, a cardboard festival, a lot of things going on, salmon lessons, so come down. All the money benefits are Rockwell Park, to improve the Rockwell Park, so it's a great, this will be the third annual Harbor Festival, so we're looking forward to be a big success. So if you need tickets, come see me or see the Harbor Master. Secondly, I just wanted to say congratulations on the ribbon cutting for the Maritime Center. It's a huge success on all of our parts. I think we're all really excited. Thank you to the Capitol Committee, Diane, you and the town administrator and everybody involved, I know Lisa Shola, Jessica, everybody, all my colleagues here, everybody was involved with the decision, and we worked through it, and I think it's a beautiful, beautiful building, and it's going to be a great economic engine. And finally, I've been going through downtown and looking at all the outside dining, and I've been traveling through with some of my friends, and they're just saying how beautiful the town looks, and what an environment we're showing off. And Diane, I noticed on the bike path, a lot of bikers coming in. I was just curious, is there any place where they can park their bikes and lock them up? There, it doesn't seem to be a lot of spots where they can kind of bike racks. And I just know if that was in the thought process, you guys, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, but just, I know a lot of people coming in by bike, and they look for places to lock up their bike, put it safely, so. Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot there.
I did recollect some nice bike racks along Hope Street with the Hope Street project. We had the Steel Yard.
Yep. There's one in the corner right over here.
There's one at the corner, there's one in front of Leo's. Can't recall where the others are, but as we can, we will certainly try to get more, either through grants or through, you know, new private developments that are coming forward, so.
Right. I just noticed some residents asking, they were saying, you know, seeing a lot more bike traffic, which is great, you know, and we just want to make sure we're providing a safe place for them to lock up their bikes, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had. Have a great night.
Ms. Perella?
Just to follow up on that, Diane, it'd probably be good to have just like one right in Independence Park where the bike path ends, so that if people want to go walking from there, that might be like an obvious location.
Yeah.
Okay, so, a couple of things. While I'm on with Diane, I will, so I was asked the other day by constituent, and I think some that we all know, and I thought she raised a good point, and she asked me why there wasn't a crosswalk between right here at Court Street and Hope Street, you know, Hope Street, so people coming up to do business in the town hall, or if they have other business on the other side of Hope Street, and they're parking here in the municipal lot. I did explain the situation with the state vis-à-vis the difficulty in getting crosswalks and the, so I was wondering, so as I was talking to her, I thought about the flags. And I know that you've extended them, I don't know how successful that program is, but I think it is a good point that was made, that this is probably a pretty busy little intersection right here, because of our town parking lot, because the town hall's here, a lot of reason to stay on this side, but you do have the hair salon, which is pretty busy there. And so if you could look into that and maybe figure out whether you think that would be a worthwhile place to put it. Tony, I'm not going to go there with the crosswalk issue, because I think we keep, we've gone through that over and over and over again, and it is kind of, I don't want to say, I'll say unfortunate that we have so few that people, you know, the perspective on crosswalks, because there really aren't very many in downtown, but be that as it may. And the only other thing is, as Tim was talking about, the boil coming up, the, I just was reminded that the Natalie Swift fundraiser to support her family is this Saturday at Bruce Hill Park in Warren. I forget the time, I think it's probably something like 5 o'clock, five, probably around.
Five to 10.
Five to 10, yeah. And it is a great fundraiser with music and silent auctions to help support her family. As many people know, she suffers from ALS and has young children. I believe it's $20 to get in at the door, but if you buy tickets in advance, it, they're $10, I believe they're available at Gil's Savon Shoes, and I think Amaral's Fish and Chips, if I'm not mistaken. So that was definitely like a worthwhile place to stop if you're in your travels on Saturday evening. With that, have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart?
So I'm going to keep you busy, Diane.
Yeah, everybody's.
One thing I noticed when I'm downtown, and I know we spent a lot of time on it, and I don't know what the agreement is, but I believe in trying things and see if they succeed. There's something that's not succeeding in our town, and that's the bus stops.
Oh, yes.
And we're giving up parking spaces, but at the end result, they are not going into the boxes, and people are just parked behind them. So the purpose of keeping traffic flow in downtown Bristol, and I think it's just probably the width of Hope Street and how they end up at State, and it's a busy intersection, and they have to be cautious themselves of their safety. But in the long run, we've tried it, and as a community, I think if it's not going to result in changing anything, then I would rather get some parking spaces back for the businesses and our residents downtown Bristol. We tried it, I've seen it time and time again, they just do not go into the boxes.
Well, I'll attest to that, but just last night, I was thinking about that. I was behind a bus, there were three or four people getting on, it was around 9:30 last night, right here at State Street, the bus was heading north. The cars were, you know, they were out in the road. All I had to do was just get in front of them and take a right-hand turn, and I couldn't do it. And so, and I thought, well, this really serves no purpose, because they don't pull it, you know?
So if we can have this conversation with them, I know it was part of, you know, the whole initiative, which I understand in communities, of what they were trying to accomplish, but we tried it here, and it's no offense, but it's not working. So why not gain those parking spaces and get them back, because I think that's crucial for downtown. Speaking of Riptor, I know last meeting I had mentioned on how they started their ferry shuttle from Providence to Newport, and in conversations with the Harbor Master, he's been in conversation with them about the type of boat, what might be feasible a size, and what might be needed here in our harbor if we were to entertain that. So I just wanted to update the residents that that's ongoing, and possibilities may not be this year for a schedule, but we can actually put it in place for next year, and especially with all the work and expansions we're dealing with, maybe we can keep that mindful going forward with our projects, if need be, we have to accommodate that as an extra stop for people coming, whether from Newport or Providence. Also, National Grid, I just saw an article, and I was going to talk about it even without seeing their article, that they've been scanning the East Bay by Ariel to make an assessment of their power lines. My topic, though, was if we remember the last bad storm, National Grid did a big project after of trimming the trees. We can remember how they did Ferry Road, which wasn't what we were interested into when they gutted out the trees, but having conversations with a couple of members of the Conversation Conservation Commission, I think going forward. a couple of members of the Conversation Conservation Commission, I think going forward, maybe we can have another talk with National Grid here in our community to assess our trees with the new tree ward, and now that he's here, and have everybody have a discussion of what trees need to be cut back to be proactive, now that the storms are coming upon us, and maybe they can get more active in that program, and we can have that conversation, Tony. Also, the police department, they've been under their accreditation. I certainly made my comments known on how proud we are of them and their impact for our community, and we are very proud. So I have a positive feeling once they make their assessment. Captain Burke. Also, congratulations. Last Friday morning, myself and the administrator congratulated Senior Chief John D. Hughes, who retired from the Bristol Coast Guard Station after many years of service. So I just want to, again, wish him well in the public forum. He served 27 years, so we wish him and his family well, who reside in Bristol. And to speak about the Maritime Center, as the Vice Chair mentioned, I feel this is just the beginning now that it's completed, and I know there was a lot of conversation on the money being spent, but here was a building that was aging infrastructure-wise that needed the attention. So not only did we fix the building the right way, but with all these other projects, as the chair said, with the Mariner, the new walkway, getting back to the bike racks, I believe Independence Park, we're going to be addressing a whole new configuration of Independence Park when all the money comes available in a prudent way. And I believe the bike racks were included with also a directory at the foot of the bike path in tandem with the state, with that new configuration and that map that you provided, that you and Walter's been working on along with the administration. Other than that, thank you, Mike Davis, Archie Martins, everybody who came out tonight, and everyone tuning in at home, and I hope everyone's having a safe and pleasant summer.
Mr. Harrisoff?
I just have a couple of items. Last weekend, we were in Newport on the boat when they had the Folk Festival, and it was very impressive to see that large catamaran ferry journeying into Newport on this new trip between Providence and Newport. And there's been some discussion around town that we ought to seek there, not every day, but occasionally making a stop in Bristol, because I think some of our citizens might like to get aboard and either go from Bristol to Providence or go from Bristol to Newport. And they can land at perhaps State Street Dock, or they might be able to land at the Coast Guard, if we could work it out with the Coast Guard. A third alternative would be to land near the town beach at the Colt Park Pier. So I'd just like to suggest to the town administrator and to the staff that maybe you should look into whether or not the state would consider once a week or once a weekend or something, making a stop in Bristol, so that our citizens can avail themselves of it. Is that something you could look into a bit?
Councilman Stewart actually alluded to that previously, so the Harbor Master is actually pursuing that already.
So yes?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, let's do it.
It's a great idea.
I will follow up with the Harbor Master.
Appreciate that. And of course, I'm always interested in keeping the streets clean, clean Bristol. I'm pleased to have had an opportunity to observe in action the new sidewalk sweeper, which is a very large vacuum that's pushed around, and it seemed to function pretty well. I hope it'll be used a lot in different areas. I would say that unfortunately, to do a perfect job, which we can observe in some other cities like New York, you probably need to have some sort of handwork with a broom and maybe a backpack vacuum to get the corners. Walking downtown today, I wasn't all that pleased with the way it all looked. I mean, there's stuff in the gutters, and there's too much around, there's no treatment of the soil and stuff around the trees there. We could do better. So I think I'd like to say that the effort is appreciated, but we've still got a ways to go, and maybe I'll have to get my group out again to prove that we can have it perfect downtown, at least for a couple of days. That's all I have tonight.
Town Administrator Agenda Items?
The first, we have the pleasure to have Captain Burke here, as was already pointed out by the chair. And he's here. We certainly love his presence. However, chief, he's filling in for chief, because chief is busy with the accreditation team this evening. But certainly, as you've already stated, the process has been a pretty lengthy process. It has involved the police department, but thus far, the comments back from the two individuals that I spoke to from the accreditation team is that they love Bristol, they wish they could move into Bristol. They certainly have enjoyed the harbor, the, you know, and just about many other spots throughout town. So we're looking forward to the report, but I can assure you, it's going to be a very positive report.
And a good point there is that this accreditation is volunteer. This is not a requirement. This is us asking for the pain, for some reason. Obviously, I joke around, but it means that this is not something that we have to do. This is something that we want to do, and we received that accreditation before. I say "we," the police department received the accreditation before. But the Bristol Police Department, I think, is on track for doing it again, and as you've just said, and we've all said, it's, we have a lot of faith. I think we all, I know I was here last night speaking in favor of it, and I think if Mary was here, and I know the rest made telephone calls to share our input. So everyone here has a lot of faith, and doing a great job.
That is very true. In fact, the individual that interviewed me, she says, you know, "I give a lot of credit that the police department actually opens up the book and shows how transparent they are." It's like, okay, here it is. Look through, check every corner, you know, make sure that you, if there is any issues, you know, let us know. But I can assure you, we are very transparent, and they appreciate that very much. They stated that when they met with me. The other announcement would be Gollum &amp; Fathers is having their outing this Sunday from 12 to 6. So if you're looking for some good food, you know, come down, say hello. I'll be in a food court.
And what will you be cooking?
It'll be a combination of burgers, home fries, chicken fingers, you know, name it. Many of those items, they will have in a food court. So come down and enjoy. It should be a great day, although the weather forecast doesn't look too healthy at this point. But hopefully, everybody put out their rosary, and things will hold up for the 12 to 6 block. Aside from that, just, thank you.
Tony, could I just ask a, not ask, but just a quick question or comment on the reaccreditation, because it is a reaccreditation, and the department has had it for 12 years. Maybe Captain Burke knows the numbers off the top of his head, but if I'm, the chief, after the meeting adjourned, there are about seven or eight members of the public, there's a public hearing last night. I think, is there 18,000, I might be wrong on this number, 18,000 law enforcement agencies and 700 are accredited? Is it 18,000 or is it 1,800? I think it's 18,000.
I'm not sure.
It was, maybe.
Let's go with 18,000 and only 700. I like that number. It sounds.
Well, I think maybe, Tony, it might be worth just for the next meeting.
I agree.
Because this is something that is voluntary, and there are a number of standards that people have to, that the police department has to adhere to in order to be accredited by this national organization. And basically, the point is very few go out for it and make it. And I think, you know, Bristol to have been in that situation, to be accredited for the last 12 years, and it's, I believe, every three years you come up with reaccreditation, but I think this year, now they're changing it to every four years. And so that says a lot about the process and the training of our police officers here in Bristol. So we're very proud of that, and maybe you or the chief could do a little commercial at the next council meeting about it.
Very true. We actually are one of the very few in the city of Rhode Island that are nationally accredited. There are some of them that are credited through Rhode Island, but we are one of the very few. In fact, this process this time around, unlike the other one, is it's more of an interview, interactive with the public, because they felt very comfortable with all the policies that the police department already has on board. And so they didn't want to go and scrutinize every little piece, because they already had background information, but they wanted to be much more interactive this time around.
As you stated, though, I like how you mentioned about, you know, how long they were down, because after my comments, we got talking about where they were from, so I said, "How long will you be down for? Have you gone throughout our town?" Because like the administrator and all of us, we're all big cheerleaders to promote our town. So I said, "Did you eat at any establishments?" And she stated that you have a lovely town, like you said, and they look forward to coming back without even being here professionally. So.
I tried to encourage the chief to make sure that before they leave tomorrow, because tomorrow's their last day. They arrived here on Monday, leaving tomorrow sometime in a later part of the day. I mentioned, make sure that they have an opportunity to taste the seafood here in town. And so hopefully, I'm not going to advertise anyone in particular, but you know what restaurants we could, they could go to really savor some of the nice delicious seafood.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you. I would like to request a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 42-46-5A5, lease of real property, the Glading as a veto property.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And also for executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's 42-46-5A2, litigation regarding Clipper Way.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, request for executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law's Section 42-46-5A2, litigation, Bristol Warren Regional School District.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. Good night, everyone. Thank you.